Anybody watching on our website, we're not streaming live on our Facebook page right now. We're having a technical difficulty, but we're going to go ahead and get started because that's what people expect us to do. So Jennifer Cowan, will you please lead us in the vacation and pledge of allegiance?
As we begin this meeting, let us take a moment to reflect together in silence as we approach the Fourth of July, to be grateful for our independence and liberties and to remember those who have served and currently serve in support of those freedoms. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to recall the way to stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Second meeting in a row. We have a lot of people in the audience, a lot of good stuff going on. For a really important announcement, in the next couple of weeks, it's Commissioner Rob Walker's birthday, but he won't be here for it, so we are celebrating afterwards with cake. So if you want to stick around, feel free. Happy birthday, Rob. All right, we'll move on to presentations. We have the Independence Day proclamation, and I'll turn that over to Commissioner Walker. And I believe we have the Calladicee Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution here.
Yes.
Come on up while he reads.
Well, yes, well, welcome. I have to say, this proclamation is pretty special to me for a whole host of reasons, but my mom, my grandmother, were daughters of the American Revolution, and we've actually visited the library and we know who our patriots are, and so I think this is a very special moment. So, Independence Day 2023, whereas 247 years ago, 56 brave men signed their names to a bold creed of freedom that set the course for our nation and changed the history of the world. And whereas, on this anniversary, we remember the great courage and conviction of our founders, and we celebrate the enduring principles of our Declaration of Independence. And whereas, as we celebrate our independence, Americans can take pride in our history and look to the future with confidence. As we offer our gratitude to the American patriots, past and present, who have sought to advance freedom and laid the foundations of peace, and whereas, because of their sacrifice, this country remains a beacon of hope for all who dream of liberty, and a shining example to the world of what a free people can achieve. Now, therefore, I, Robert Walker, by virtue of authority vested in me by the mayor of the city of Dunedin, Florida, on behalf of the entire city commission, do hereby observe Tuesday, July 4th, 2023, as Independence Day in Dunedin, and pay special tribute to all the men and women currently serving in the armed forces and to our veterans. Our city is indeed grateful for their contributions, which have been critical to the defense of our country and to our freedom.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. The Declaration of Independence is America's birth certificate, our most celebrated document. As we celebrate the birth of our nation's Independence Day, we, the members of the Calladicee Chapter, the Daughters of the American Revolution, encourage our citizens to take time to recall the sacrifices our four daughters made. In hand and sign.
The document knew what he risked when he wrote his signature under these words. "We mutually pledge to each other our lives, our fortunes, and our sacred honor that this nation, under God, shall not perish from the earth." Likewise, let us honor all the brave service members and veterans who have helped secure and preserve the freedoms we enjoy every day. Thank you, Mary, Mayor, Mayor, for this proclamation designating Independence Day, and happy Fourth of July to everyone.
Thank you, ladies. Okay, it's time for citizen input, and this is a time for anybody to speak to anything that's not already on the agenda. I see any number of people here for a couple of different reasons, so come on up, Dave.
Thank you, Mayor. David Ballard Geddes Jr., I live at 802 Georgia Avenue in Palm Harbor. The government has caused a great deal of controversy in characterizing its political behavior as a gay right. The news media has exemplified the government as having the same body of rights as the civilian gay population. Our government is using the gay society as a pawn to justify their own political pride in and of government, in effect mocking the civilian gay community to enhance a cross-dressed political agenda as based on the Fourteenth Amendment. I want to be clear about this. Society as a whole pays its taxes to ensure that government is intercourseing its duty constructively in a productive fashion, birthing itself in a practical manner that is useful to the whole of society. As a reasonably foreseen expected duty of government, this body is required to conduct its business properly, sensibly, legitimately, responsibly, productively, and efficiently. As a paid body politic, you do not have the proactive right to conduct your business gaily or pridefully. Our government as a political body, legislation as a body politic, Congress as a political body, the body of our local county and city commission and any of its partnerships contracted in the Constitution thereof attempting to formulate or justify their actions based on the leisure activities of the gay civilian population is unacceptable. As a paid political body, you are individually liable for any and all discoursing of your paid political performance, candidly pretentiously discoursing in any of your political duty, using this gay rights issue of such as political rhetoric in order to formulate covert or cross-dressed political misrepresentations in and of the government is to forfeit your interest in matters of justification and void such jurisdictional powers of taxation. Such insidious, prideful behavior in and of our current form of government is alarming. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Who's next? Come on down. Welcome. Welcome, welcome.
Where'd the mayor go? Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, and staff, we want to thank you for this opportunity to promote something that, again, the city of Dunedin helped with the Dunedin History Museum to put on this wonderful event, which is the 11th Orange Festival that we've held in the city of Dunedin. This year, we're going back to our roots, and we'll be doing it at Pioneer Park, and again, with all your help and support for the city, we're going to hand it over to Rika. So, and that's the logo of it, the poster, and she's going to give you a little bit of update of what's going to be at the event.
Awesome. Welcome, Rika.
Thank you. It's nice to see you guys. Hope everybody's having a good day. We are here to invite you and all of the people of Dunedin and beyond to join us at the 11th Annual Orange Festival, Saturday, July 8th, 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. at Pioneer Park. We'll have music, both live and a DJ throughout the day. We will have our bagpiper, keep it traditional. We also will have some ukulele talent sharing their talent with us. We'll have vintage cars, food trucks, beer and sangria, as well as kids' games. We're having our pinup contest at 3:00 p.m. We have 21 pinups participating, and we'll be giving out two prizes. There will be the Miss Dunedin Orange Festival, which is our traditional crowning, as well as our most popular pinup, which is a fundraiser for the museum. All of the pinups, pictures are posted on both our Facebook page and website, and we're hoping that people will come and vote by making a donation, and whoever raises the most money will be voted as the most popular pinup. We're also having our Brew Off, which is a really exciting event. We have all eight Dunedin breweries, which includes the seven downtown breweries, as well as our newest Beach Island Brewery. They're vying for our coveted trophy, which Steve, wherever you are, has an awesome orange painted handle as a keg pull on the trophy. And to kick it all off on Sunday, if you guys are free, at 4 o'clock, we will all be taking the trophy to visit all eight breweries, starting at 4 o'clock. We're going to meet at Beach Island Brewery. The path or schedule, I guess, is posted on the website, but we hope to visit all eight with the trophy.
Have fun with that.
The first year--
You might be able to make it through four.
We have lost the trophy--
Maybe five, if you're lucky. Yeah, you don't want me there.
It showed up at the end, but we'd like to invite all of you to join us if you're available. Feel free to join anywhere along the way. Like I said, Larry and Leslie put together a schedule. It's posted on the website. Yes, and if you need more information, you can visit dunedinorangefestival.com or the dunedymuseum.org website.
Well, thank you so much. We're so excited, and several, for those out there, I know you all know, several of us are serving our OJ, which is traditional that our very own Coca-Cola donated this year. So we're really excited about that, that they're involved.
We have a lot of local sponsors, so they're all listed on our website, and we're very grateful to all--
Yeah, and it's a nice shady park.
Yes.
So, you know, we all know how hot it's been. Come rain or shine, right?
And 100% of the profits go to the History Museum.
Come out and join. Thank you, guys, and thanks for all the hard work.
Appreciate it. See you then.
Okay, who's next under citizen input? We had a, where did our SAS gentleman go? No? Okay, real quick, Jennifer, did you find that? Can you read it? I've asked Jennifer to pull up our anti-discrimination ordinance and read it for the benefit of the public.
Do you want me to read the entire thing, or can I skip the--
Yeah, you can skip the definitions.
So pursuant to section 4232 of the-- Oh, excuse me. Pursuant to section 4232 of the city of Dunedin's Code of Ordinances, equal rights in public, in places of public accommodation, resort, or amusement, no person, natural or created being the owner's lessy, proprietor, manager, superintendent, agent, or employee of any place of public accommodation, resort, or amusement within the city, shall directly or indirectly deny to any person any accommodation, advantage, facility, privilege of such place, and no person shall directly or indirectly publish by any means within the city any communication of whatever, whatsoever nature, to the effect that any accommodation, advantage, facilities, privileges of public accommodation, resort, amusement shall be denied to any person on the account of race, color, religion, ancestry, sex, national origin, gender identity, or expression, or sexual orientation, or that the patronage of such place of any person, of any particular race, color, religion, ancestry, sex, national origin, gender identity, or expression, or sexual orientation, is unwelcome or not solicited. Production of such a communication purporting to relate to any such place, to be made by any person being the owner, lessy, proprietor, superintendent, manager, agent, or employee of such place, shall be presumptive evidence in any proceeding that the communication was authorized and published by such person. You also have section 4233--
You don't have to take it any further.
Okay.
Frankly, you could totally tell that John Hubbard wrote that. But the point of having it read is that we support everybody, no matter who they are. We don't, we support gay rights, and we support heterosexual rights. We support seniors, and we support young people. There is no one we discriminate against, and I just wanted to make that very clear. I thought it was really important. Thank you. Okay. Mayor-- Yes, ma'am.
Are we going to introduce our new CPO?
Yes. Sorry. I got carried away.
That's quite all right.
I just wanted to come up here and introduce myself real quick to everybody who I haven't met yet. My name's Austin Brooks. I'm the new CPO for the city of Dunedin. I'm out there today, and I'm really looking forward to getting to meet everybody and addressing any issues that we have in the community and working with everybody. So, thanks again for the opportunity to come up and introduce myself.
Thank you and welcome. We appreciate you being in our city. Oh, come on. Citizen input. I know you had something to share with us.
Hi, my name is Alan Stewart, and I gotta calm down a little bit. I've been a member of the SAS for, well, I first came down 18 years ago, and it was just entertaining at the SAS over on Louton Street. And then it became, I entertained every Friday night for three years, and things changed and things went on, but I had saved photographs, these collages from the SAS, and I would like to donate them to the Dunedin Historic Society.
Yes, they were just here, too.
They were?
Yeah.
Okay, and so Scotland is my life, and I was born in Scotland in 1950, came here in 1959, lived in New Jersey, and then somehow ended up in Florida. Ken Geese was the president, the first president. Diane Burke was the president for a long time. Patty Plount was really involved, but I was the entertainer.
Well, we thank you so much.
I am a Scotsman.
We thank you. Can you, can you hold those up so that people can see them? Because that's pretty cool. Those are really nice. And Jeff, as the liaison to everything Scottish, and I'm the liaison to the History Museum, you and I will figure out a way to get this over there, and they are the keeper of all of our history, so we thank you very much.
So, as they say in Scotland, Scots were here where Wallace bled. Scots wembroses of the inside. Welcome to your glory bed and on to victory.
Slancha. Mine was easier. That's a little Gaelic. Thank you, sir. Okay, no one else, right, on citizen input? I think we're good. All right, now we'll move on to action items. Our first item is the donation agreement for the redevelopment of Highlander Aquatic Complex. Vince?
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Commissioners. This is a great presentation this evening, tonight, and I'm really honored to recognize our donors here with us, David and Nancy Billheimer, for their very generous donation of $1 million to the therapy pool as part of our redevelopment of the Highlander Aquatic Complex.
We'll talk a little bit more about them in a minute, but go ahead.
I would also like to recognize our former Vice Mayor and longtime City Commissioner, Deborah Kynes, for bringing us together, both Jennifer and I, with David and Nancy for this great contribution to our aquatic facility, so--
Thank you, Deborah.
Several lunches and a few meetings, and we worked it out. It's been, it's just been great working with Deborah and both Nancy, David, and of course Jennifer. For those of you who are not familiar, oh, and also I want to recognize Alicia Castor-Cohen, our aquatic coordinator, who is here this evening as well. Having a very, very, very busy summer. So for those of you who are not familiar with a therapy pool, I'd like to take a moment to mention its wonderful benefits and uses. The physical layout of our therapy pool would be 45 feet by 75 feet, including an ADA ramp making the inside area of the pool 3,300 square feet, and the depth, the water depth, three and a half to four feet. The average water temperature would be 89 to 92 degrees. The benefits of the therapy pool could include improving one's strength and stability, balance, cardiovascular health, and joint flexibility. It also helps with relaxing muscles and reducing pain. The therapy pool can be used for a variety of community classes such as water wellness and aerobics, water walking and jogging, stretching and toning, arthritis movement classes, Tai Chi-inspired classes, balance and boost, balance boosting classes. Other uses also include private classes for special need, population-- Other uses also include private classes for special need population that requires warm waters, and also for the rehabilitation after injuries and/or surgeries, such as backs, hips, ankles, feet, and shoulders. And I also want to mention that our fitness specialist, who wasn't able to make it this evening, Bobby Gallagher, has a master's degree in physical therapy. So between Bobby and Alicia, our therapy pool will be well-programmed, well-used, and it'll be really an asset for our community. And just a few highlights of the agreement as follows. The donor commits to providing $1 million to assist the city towards Phase One redevelopment of the aquatic complex for its therapy pool. Payments will be made to the city as follows: $250,000 October 1, 2024, $500,000 October 1, 2025, and $250,000 October 1, 2026, which could go in the coordination of how we're building, and depending on exactly what we'll be building, but the timing really works well for our schedule. To honor the donor and express the appreciation of the city, publicity in form of news announcements, both internal and external, will be made, in addition to naming rights to the therapy pool, and will be displayed using signage at the pool location. And also, it's not in the agreement, but we did promise them we would give them and their family lifetime passes to the aquatic facility. If either city or donor reasonably determines that the purpose of which the donation was given cannot be accomplished or honored, that party must notify the other party, and the city must return any amount of donation that has not been expended to the donor within 30 business days of such notice. And City Attorney Jennifer Cowan has prepared this agreement. Thank you, Jennifer, for all your help, and has approved as the form. It has also been executed by the donors, David and Nancy Bilheimer. City staff recommends commission approval of this donor agreement. And now, if there's any questions or comments, we're here to answer.
Thank you, Vince. So questions, and questions only. We'll leave the comments for the end. Any questions? Any questions? Okay, anybody from the public wish to come forward and speak to this item? Okay. I will come back to the commission. Can I have a motion to approve?
Fight him over it.
Yeah. All right. Commissioner Franny as the first, and Commissioner Gao as the second. And now we will do final comments. Commissioner Franny.
What can, what can you say, right? What you're doing for Dunedin, David and Nancy, is amazing. When I first heard it, and I think it was from Deborah, I just couldn't believe the generosity and the caring for the community. I, I guess on behalf of Dunedin residents, so grateful that you, and this isn't the first thing you've done for our community. You do a lot for our community. And so it's just great when someone kind of lives out the word, lives out the message, lives out love, right, gives to others, and this is a real gift to our community, and thank you so much.
Commissioner Gao.
Thank you, Mayor. And if you look back... Much better. And if you look back through the history of Dunedin, we really were built on generosity and the passion of our residents. And residents give in all sorts of ways, whether it's through service or through financial opportunities. But that's really the backbone of Dunedin, and is how we were built, and it's that interaction between the residents and city government that just really makes Dunedin incredibly unique. Nancy and Bill, thank you very much for just being one more layer of the generosity from the residents that really makes Dunedin unique and the envy of all the other cities in our area. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. You are just outstanding representation of the City of Dunedin and the residents of Dunedin for everything you have done in the past and for what you've done in this particular case. This is just an outstanding presentation. Thank you so very much on behalf of all of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Walker?
So thank you, Dave and Nancy. Your donation truly embodies the spirit of this community and the, I think, thank you for what you have done. Thank you for what you are doing. I think we all feel a very heartfelt pride in your action and your activity. Thank you.
So, you know, for those watching that may not know, Dave and Nancy were very large contributors towards the Gladys Douglas property. And if it hadn't been for them, we would have never obtained it. And their donation helped us incite everyday residents with their five and 10 and 20 and several hundred dollar donations to come along. So yes, they have a history here in Dunedin, but now they're coming forward with something that's kind of similar in a way where, you know, being at the Gladys Douglas Preserve is, helps your health, you know? You're walking the trails, you're enjoying nature, it's peaceful and preserving nature. This isn't that much different. This is something for the health and well-being of everyone, whether, whether you might be ill and recuperating, or whether you are, you know, just trying to stay healthy, especially as a senior. So we thank you so very much for your generosity. We see your name everywhere, in and outside of Dunedin, so we are not the sole receivers of your generosity, but we appreciate how much you've invested in Pinellas County on a whole. I also want to thank Commissioner Kynes, because this is something that Commissioner Kynes really got started on, I don't know, maybe as long as two years ago? You know, at least a year. And it's been quite a while. And, you know, Commissioner Kynes is like the Energizer Bunny. You know, she takes a licking and keeps on ticking. It's like she, she just keeps on giving. And, you know, we appreciate you for that. We really do. Jennifer, did you have anything to add? Because I know you've been a part of this.
So Vincent mentioned we had a series of lunches, and I have to tell you that the first lunch that we had with Mr. and Mrs. Bilheimer, I was nervous, because your name precedes you, and you are, as the mayor had said, you're large in our community, to be sure, and in the, in the, you know, greater community as well. And so we, once we sat down at that luncheon, we had such a good time, such a good chat, so down-to-earth and so genuine and so supportive of our community. And I remember, just, it's kind of funny aside, I hope Vince doesn't mind, but Vince was describing the pool and everything that we're going to do with the pool, and he's chatting, 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 talking, talking, and Mr. Bilheimer said, "Okay, you're done. I'll give you the money." "You don't have to go on anymore." "You don't get any better than yes," right?
Yeah, that's funny.
Yeah. And so then we had a subsequent luncheon to kind of nail down all of, all of the details. But I just got, it was wonderful to get to know you through this process. And as Mr. Bilheimer says, hurry, get it done.
Yes.
He wants to be in that pool.
Yes, they both just said that, I think probably individually to each one of us.
Yes.
And they don't want to see a dog park on Sterling.
Yes.
I'm just sharing it.
Uh-oh. Anyway, throw that in. But anyway, so it was, is good to get to know you, and we'll keep you posted on our progress as we go along. And of course, Commissioner Kynes, who asked me every single time on our one-on-one meetings, what's happening with that therapy pool, what's happening with that therapy pool? So she is persistent, to say the least.
Well, and I think Commissioner Franny's taken up that cause, so...
Yes, she... Yes. Commissioner Franny has...
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
She, she has picked up that ball, and she's running with it, Commissioner Franny. And also Vince, you know, just, just did a super job keeping on top of it and working with Mr. and Mrs. Bilheimer, Bilheimer, excuse me. So just so grateful that, that the Bilheimers can bring this to our community, to add it to our aquatic complex, to, and it's just going to be, you know, the number of uses in here is just going to be of such benefit and support to our community, and it, these types of nights really make my job easy. So I'm very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. And now we would, yes. And we would like to take a picture. So Rebecca, would you, would you all come up? And we'll just stand up and... Oh, oh, yeah. Sorry. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Torga?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Torga?
Aye.
Commissioner Gao?
Aye.
Commissioner Franny?
Aye.
Mayor Bajalski?
Aye, and that motion passes unanimously. Sorry about that. Yeah, no, that's important. Thank you, Vince. All right. Now we'll move on to our first reading of ordinance 23-03, Historic Landmark Designation for 559 Highland Avenue. Jennifer Cowan, would you please read ordinance 23-03 by title only?
Ordinance 23-03, an ordinance of the City of Dunedin, Florida, designating the structure located at 559 Highland Avenue as a local historic landmark and providing for an effective date.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve? Okay, Vice Mayor Torga and Commissioner Walker. Frances, welcome.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, Frances Leongshar, Planner Two for the city. We're here this evening to present a local historic landmark designation for the property at 559 Highland Avenue. And as you can see, I hope my presentation is viewable. Okay.
Yeah, we can see it on our, on our monitors.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, we, we see what's up there.
Yes, thank you. So this particular application is located at 559 Highland Avenue. Once again, this is a home, was a home to one of our mayor, Mayor Alfred J. Grant, or A.J. Grant, as many people are, are familiar with. He is also known as the Grand Old Man of Dunedin.
He's like the fourth mayor, right?
Yes.
Well, he's fourth over there, but I thought, I thought he was our first mayor.
The third.
Third.
Yes.
Okay.
So he has served as mayor and commissioner to the City of Dunedin for over 30 years. Just to give everybody familiarity of where the home exists, it is just approximately three blocks away from Grant Field, who he had made a significant contribution to the ballpark there. And I also included that it's just merely an eight-minute walk, according Google Maps, from the historic home. And at the stadium, you'll also see a plaque that was dedicated to Mayor Grant, as you see there. And so based upon the designation criteria, one of which is of architectural significance, the home was built in 1953, and it is representative of the mid-century ranch-style home. So that would check off the box of the meeting criteria, that it is a character of an established geographical definable neighborhood, which is similar in culture, architectural style, and development. So you'll see that the neighboring homes are of similar style there. And the other criteria that has been met is that it does demonstrate a distinguishing characteristics of an architectural style of mid-century ranch, which is valuable for the study of that time period, which is the 1950s post-war era and method construction. And then the other main criteria for the designation is of its historical significance. So I can, as you can see in the timeline here, in 1899, we all know that the, that the city was incorporated as, as a city or a town, as shown here. And Alfred Grant was appointed as its first marshal and tax collector. And in 1934, the Grant Field, the Ball Field was built and expanded as part of the WPA Grant, or Works Progress Administration Grant. And the WPA was part of the New Deal that carried out public works projects, including the development of this field. And A.J. Grant used the private funds to acquire the land and oversaw the construction of the field that is later dedicated in 1938. And then, once again, in 1953, the home that we are looking to designate was constructed at 559 Highland Avenue. And then 1956 is the passing of Mayor Grant, basically with, as a result of the tremendous legacy that he left behind, it is one of the more significant importance that we would like to designate this property as a local historic landmark. And then as a result...
It's so, I'm sorry, it's just so cool to still see it being used as a baseball field.
Yes, absolutely.
Anyway, go ahead, sorry.
No worries. So, once again, the application was submitted for its designation as a historic landmark in remembrance of Alfred J. Grant and his contributions towards the establishment of the City of Dunedin. We do have our homeowner here, Ms. Deborah Tedesco, present for the meeting. The application was also held and heard by the Historic Preservation Advisory Committee, or H-PAC, on May 11, 2023. And they also, too, had unanimously recommended approval for the local designation. Based on the criteria that I just presented, staff finds the request to be consistent with the, with the designation of the local historic landmark. And staff, and also, we also have our property owner here, are available for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Okay, any questions for Frances? Anybody from the public wishing to come forward and speak to this item? Did you want to come forward and say anything about the property? You can. You don't need to, not required. Thank you, though. We appreciate that. Okay, I'll come back to the maker of the motion, Vice Mayor Torga.
If I may, Deborah, thank you very much for bringing this forward. This is just an excellent presentation about our culture, our community, our City of Dunedin. We're all familiar with that name. Hopefully, that name will remain for a long time, but just very important to our community. So thank you very much for bringing that forward. Thank you for the committee for making sure that this got approved as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Walker?
Well, we have a designated home ourselves, and we did it because of the fact that I truly believe that this, this is such an important part of our community, because it's, it's truly, it truly has made this community what it is today. And I just want to thank you for bringing this forward, and just hats off to you. Thank you.
Commissioner?
No, I mean, I'll just add, Deborah, thank you for your commitment to history. My fellow commissioners, I mean, history is such an important part of what we are, and it takes individual citizens like yourself to be committed to it. So, thank you.
Nope. Do I have to repeat it?
No.
Commissioner Gao?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one more layer. You know, as I mentioned before, it's, residents give back in all manners. And the, and our, our history, our culture is certainly part of that, and especially this home. And it's tied to somebody who is so prominent in, in the community and did so much that it's still acknowledged today with, with baseball fields and such. So it is so important that you come forward and do this for our community. So thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.
Well, it's hard to follow all of that up, I mean, what else do I say except thank you? But I just have to repeat, it's just so cool that it's still, not just the house and its historical nature of its architecture, but it's because of the person equally. And, and the fact that the person, you know, went out and bought that Grant Field with his own money. And I played on that Grant Field as a little leaguer. It was laid out a little differently than what we saw in the picture, and certainly what it is today.
Was that back in 1899?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.[916.12][916.12](Laughter) You'd be closer to that than me. Just saying.[920.00][920.00](Laughter)
Oh!
I'm just teasing.
Yeah, right.
Um, you know, and, so baseball's always, the point is, is, you know.
Vengeance is getting me bad, be careful. Go ahead.
You're throwing me off the plane. See, she made me forget what I was going to say. I just think it's so important.
It's a sign of age, you know?
Yeah, I know.
You know what you're going to say?
Yep. Don't push me.[953.00][953.00](Laughter) I just think it's so important to honor people, places, and things that have made Dunedin special. And through historic preservation, we can do those things. So, thank you for your hard work, George, thank you for your people, Deb, thank you so much. We'll have the second reading, when?
July 27th.
July 27th or 2nd?
7th.
July 27th, we will have the second reading. And so roll call vote.
Commissioner Frainey?
Aye.
Commissioner Gao?
Aye.
Commissioner Walker?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Torga?
Aye.
Mayor Bichowski?
Aye, and that motion passes unanimously, thank you. All right, our next item is the second reading of ordinance 23-02, Deleting and Revising Chapter 70 Taxation Business Tax Receipt in Its Entirety. Jen, would you please read ordinance 23-02 by title only?
Absolutely. Ordinance 23-02, an ordinance of the City of Dunedin, Florida, deleting and revising Chapter 70 Taxation, Article 3 Business Tax Receipt of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dunedin, Florida, in its entirety, providing for publication in accordance with the requirements of law, providing for codification, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, can I have a motion to approve? Commissioner Frainey and Commissioner Gao, thank you. Long time no see, buddy.[1056.24][1056.24](Laughter)
Good evening, Mayor.
Welcome.
Joseph Posner, on behalf of the Community Development Department. And so, yeah, we have the second and final reading. I know you have seen this, this ordinance.
Microphone.
I know you've seen this ordinance for quite some time now, so I won't go into all the backgrounds, because I didn't hear it before, but essentially what this does is rewrites our business tax ordinance, as you know, based upon the recommendations of your ordinance review committee. And that was further reinforced by the Equity Study Commission that you, you established earlier this year. They met unanimously, recommended approval of the ordinance as presented by the ordinance review committee. Essentially, the ordinance does three things. It, it brings it in line with the state statute that regulates local business taxes. It creates a very simple compressed category and classification schedule, and then creates a very simple three-tiered taxing rate schedule, based on the square footage of the business, which is, of course, easy to understand and easily verified. And so with that, I'll certainly wrap up and answer any questions you may have at this point.
Okay, are there any questions for Joey? Hmm? No? Anybody wish to come forward and speak to this item? Okay, I'll come back to the commission, final comments, Commissioner Frainey.
Well, I do notice, there was no big, there was no big rush to do the motion on this one, like there was on the other one.[1154.58][1154.58](Laughter) No, I don't have any comments, I mean, this is a second reading and.
Yep. Commissioner Gao, anything?
I don't have any second reading.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
If I may, this has been around for 10 years, I think. I really think it's been around for 10 years. And I'm so delight, delighted that this is a second reading, and that we've got this, got this done and classified, so thank you for finishing this out for us, thank you.
Commissioner Walker, anything? I don't either, so we will do a roll call, though.
Commissioner Walker?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Torga?
Aye.
Commissioner Gao?
Aye.
Commissioner Frainey?
Aye.
Mayor Bichowski?
Aye, and that motion passes unanimously. Boy, you ran quick.[1198.58][1198.58](Laughter) I didn't even get the words out of my mouth, and you were up.[1203.33][1203.33](Laughter) You'd think they were afraid of us or something, right? Okay. All right, so we have the Resolution 23-14, Amending Historic Preservation Advisory Committee Resolution 16-32. Jen, can you please read this resolution, 23-14, by title only?
Resolution 23-14, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dunedin, Florida, authorizing the continuance of the Historic Preservation Advisory, amending Resolution 1632 to adjust membership requirements and providing for an effective date.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve?
So, second.
Okay, Vice Mayor Torga and Commissioner Walker. Frances?
Yes.
You're not as afraid of us, are you?[1254.01][1254.01](Laughter) Oh, please.[1256.01][1256.01](Laughter) Get the whip out, okay, go ahead.[1262.08][1262.08](Laughter)
Well, once again, Frances Leongshar, Planner 2 for the City of Dunedin, here presenting the resolution to amend the Enabling Resolution for the Historic Preservation Advisory Committee. And just to give a brief refresher, the Historic Preservation Advisory Committee did make a presentation on April 18, 2023, which they had brought up the, the request of amending the makeup of the, of the committee, which is specifically to remove the Director of the Histor, of History Museum, as, as one of the required members to be on the committee. And as well as, one additional thing that staff has also done is to keep the makeup of the board consistent to the state's certified local government guidelines. As a result of that, we are recommending approval for the resolution, and staff is open for any questions you may have.
Okay, any questions from anybody? This is something we asked for, so. Questions?
No.
Okay. All right, anybody from the public wish to come forward and speak to this item? Seeing or hearing none, I'll come back to the commission for final comments, Vice Mayor Torga.
Thank you for the presentation. You summarized it just exactly perfect, what the purpose is, so I don't need to do that again, and so thank you for that, and, and I totally agree with that, so I'm supportive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Walker?
I don't have any.
No comments.
And me neither. Thank you to the committee, though, for working hard on trying to get things right. We appreciate that. Okay, roll call vote, Rebecca?
Commissioner Gao?
Aye.
Commissioner Frainey?
Aye.
Commissioner Walker?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Torga?
Aye.
Mayor Bichowski?
Aye, and that motion passes unanimously. Okay, and then we have the proposed agenda for the 13th. There's an annexation, there is the establishing the millage rate, there's amending the Marina user fees, and that's it. All of those might take a while to talk through, but that's what we have. And then, Rebecca, are you looking to add? Oh no, that goes on Tuesday, never mind. Okay, so can I have a motion to approve this agenda?
So, second.
Okay, Vice Mayor Torga and Commissioner Gao, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And then I know Rebecca has something to bring forward.
Thank you, Mayor. Into this afternoon, I emailed each of you. I had reached out to Mary Edenfield with the Florida League of Cities about the upcoming legislative committee appointments. I did forward that email that she sent to me, and I was hoping that we would go ahead and, I would get commission consensus to put that on the July 11 work session, so that we can ensure to return the signups for each of the committees. One of the notes that I did make is, the committees, you each have to be on different committees. We can't have two commission members serving on the same committee due to sunshine. So I just wanted to get your consensus to bring that back before the July 11, at the July 11 work session.
The Tuesday meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's fine with everybody, right?
One of the notes that she did when I talked to her, and just as a, if you're planning to go, in the information that I forwarded you, is the hotel information. You want, you might want to go ahead and get those hotel reservations, and if you don't end up going, you can cancel them, but at least then you would have a room, so.
And I think I just signed everybody's report today, whoever I thought was going.
Okay.
I mean, you're going.
Yes, ma'am.
Did I sign your report today?
I'm, I did. Is that for me?
I think it was, who all's going? You're going, I know I signed your.
Yep.
All four of you going?
Yes, if that's okay.
I, no, I don't think I signed four, though.
Mm-mm, I just have to.
No, not those, that's Toronto.
Okay.
I don't think I signed four for FO. Just double-check with Donna.
Okay.
Double-check with Donna to make sure, because I don't seem to remember signing four of the Florida League of Cities this morning when I came in. I thought there was three. I just don't remember whose it was, I gave them all back to Donna, and, and maybe one was done before and I didn't, I don't remember it.
No, I have a try and look at that. Okay, there it is.
That might be it.
There's your three, yeah.
Yeah.
Have you made reservations?
No.
You need to do that now, then.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, I would work with Donna about that right away tomorrow. Okay, then that must be it, because I'm pretty sure I had three this morning. Okay, uh, sorry. My son just shot me a text and it blew up right on top of my computer, and I'm like, "What?" He knows I'm in a meeting, it's like, "What are you doing?" Okay, anything else? Any, did you have, I thought you had something, don't you have something?
I do.
Couple somethings, don't you?
Just one something.
Hmm.
Yeah. So I do have an announcement to make.
Oh, yes.
Good news.
Yes, very good news.
And I can't bring it, bring it up on my computer, but I am very happy to announce that the City of Dunedin has won the Florida Municipal Achievement Award for Local Action for the Gladys Douglas property, so.
Yay![1613.01][1613.01](Applause) And you, you mentioned that that's like the third award we've gotten for put, for combining, getting that effort completed?
It is the, the third, yes. And if I may, Mayor, just read you a little bit, the paragraph that they sent to us.
Sure.
Would that be okay?
Mm-hmm.
It says, "The Local Action Award is given to a city for a specific single citywide effort that successfully addresses a local need. The City of Dunedin's winning, winning entry, Gladys E. Douglas Preserve, is a collaboration between the city, Pinellas County, and the community to protect the largest remaining natural area in the county. The preserve was originally the homesteaded property of Gladys E. Douglas, a local resident widely known for her philanthropy. After her passing, the property fell under the contract, under contract to a developer. When the developer walked away, the county and the city had a short amount of time to raise the necessary funds to purchase the property. More than 1,700 individuals donated their time, efforts, and monies to the cause. The community raised $4.5 million to protect and preserve this environmentally sensitive area. In addition, the city and the county reallocated $5.5 million in land preservation funds in the middle of the fiscal year during the financially tumultuous pandemic." And so, we won the Local Action Award. So it will be, actually, there is not a luncheon, they, they have issued a press release, and there's a webinar that we are going to attend, probably Vincent Gizi and myself, for the Florida League of Cities. They also are going to come to a city commission meeting to present the award itself. So, we're really very excited about this award in particular. Oh, and we're going to get an article in the National Magazine, the Quality Cities National Magazine, it's a national publication, so.
So they're not going to do anything at the August? You know how they had that?
They used to do.
The big, no, but it, not even the dinner, but the auditorium, remember when we went to the auditorium and they announced awards, they're not going to do?
They're not doing that, no. Unless, we'll just go and announce ourselves.[1744.11][1744.11](Laughter)
Well, we almost did, we almost did last August, don't you remember? When we were all there, we were like, "What the heck?" We got beat out by, I don't remember what, I'm going to be nice. Okay. Anything else? That was your only something?
It was.
Okay. All right. Well, we are going to go back there and have some cake, so if you want to join us, you're more than welcome. All right, thank you, everybody, we are adjourned.[1772.11][1772.11](Applause)[1773.11][1773.11](Music)